Okay, we do have a forum tonight. Andrea's joining us by Zoom and the town manager is on vacation. I'm sorry?
I said, "Good evening."
Oh, okay. First item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding ordinance 2020, proposed text amendment to B1 special uses. A proposed text amendment was submitted to amend the B1 special uses by adding verbiage to expand possible special uses to include business-type activities similar in nature to automotive repair, which is already a listed special use. The planning commission held its public hearing on the matter on July 20th. They recommend approval of the proposed text amendment. The town council public hearing was advertised in the Freelance Star on July 21st and July 28th. There are attachments with the ad and the special use text amendment. And there's a zoning application also. Is there anyone that would like to address? Council? We'll open the public hearing?
Alright, I'm gonna speak on behalf of the applicant, it's myself and my husband, Tim. We have applied for a proposed text amendment to be one special uses to expand on the special use that's there that lists auto repair and filling stations. And essentially what we're asking is to just expand it to light businesses, businesses that would encompass the same kind of work, the same amount of traffic, the same amount of noise, and that type of thing. And it just gives, it would be a special use, so the applicant would have to come in and ask for permission to do that business. But it gives the owners that have, are in a situation similar to ours at 133 Courthouse Lane, some flexibility on who they can rent to and who they can sell to. Because if you have a building like that with a bay, it's a very specialized building. It's hard for a store or a restaurant to come in and, without spending a lot of money, convert that into a useful building. And there are other buildings in town similar in nature, ones that are also B1, one of which is over in Autobair, the Old Town Coast, is B1 similar in nature, where the Department of Forestry currently is at Courthouse Lane, has a separate building, is also B1. I also spoke with Dawn Harris, who is on HBO Boulevard, who is B1, and is interested in possibly using someone that may want to utilize this verbiage for a special use permit. I'd ask that you guys don't consider the fact that it is a zoning ordinance change and not specific only to our property when you're making your decision, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So?
That's correct, it would be a text amendment to be one, changing what currently says automotive repair and filling stations, to expand on those uses to include not only auto repair and filling stations, but light businesses, for example, cabinetry, furniture building, possibly light welding.
But why aren't you the best to give your people a problem?
That, that would have to go through this, right now there's, that uses are available in B1, which is so. So this would be a two-step process, if another business wants to come in and use it for one of them, first they have to go through this step, and then they have to come and apply to that. So, and that happens to like a spot where only that would be how, you know.
So just to, to be clear, if you have a buyer, which I see in the, later in a minute, they still have to come to us and ask permission to do that business?
Yeah.
It's just giving them a chance to ask.
Right.
Yeah, this is the groundwork for that.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, just making sure I understood too.
Yep.
I thought about it after the last meeting when it was first proposed, and I think we're still protect, I feel like we're still protected because we still have to approve what's gonna go there. You know, like this one is a proposed HVAC company, so we still have the ability to put different requirements on that, that property for that business. So, we're adding, adding to the list that can be there, but we still hold enough strength, in my opinion, that we can regulate what can and can't be put there. The way I kinda see it. Andrea? Andrea?
Yes?
Can you give us your feedback on, on that?
I did not.
I'll repeat for you.
Thank you.
What, what, what possibilities or negative impacts could the town have by adding this to the text amendment? Are we still protected as I, I interpreted? Because we still have to give a special use permit for that business?
Yes, I, I do think that the town is still protected. You have discretionary authority whether or not to grant any request for conditional use permit or a special use permit, and then you have the ability to impose conditions to address any potential impact as a result of that use.
No, it's like use.
Well, I, I perfectly, if you read the text, the complete text, page eight, it has other types of uses, such as workshops. But the comparison was to auto repair, because currently B1 is allowed for auto repair.
So in other words, if somebody come in and they wanted to, the old page though, if somebody wanted to get out of brewery and he wouldn't be able to do an under this, or that all day long?
It's the zoning administrator felt that the brewery didn't cover the restaurant, the restaurant's allowed by B1. So, and for some reason, there was a feeling that brewery didn't cover their B1, possibly, but I think this is, my intention was more here sort of workshop, light industrial, just like I said, right now there's an auto repair shop there. If another auto repair shop wanted to come in, there would be no, they wouldn't have to come in, they could be right in. So, and the same with, you know, we're holding an auto repair, another auto repair shop right in. But if something like a furniture refinishing, something like they had in, like actual, I know a person that's quite a few, where they were creating vintage furniture, they could come in and get, because they don't really follow the retail if they're in there and the trading, the gaming furniture, they're a more of a workshop, they could come in.
And it has been heard by the planning commission, and they do, they did recommend approval.
And I, I just wanna ask you, I did intentionally make sure it said, so all the work is being done in a completely enclosed structure or properly screened outdoor area, to make for a good neighbor. And we don't want any of the neighbors to be about to jump in the back of a lot or anything like that. The intention is to be a good neighbor, to close off, you know, and really at this point, this would give council the opportunity to clean up some potential eyesores if they're coming, right? If something new moved in, so.
So, does that mean that somebody takes this property over, they have to clean up all of it? Aren't there some junk bars down on the back that they've locked up? Have they gone for a year and a half, two years?
We did a bunch of envi, personally on that property, we did a bunch of environmental cleanup, removed all the oil, all the environmental hazards, cars, all of that.
Good, okay, good. Okay, is there any other questions for Melissa and Tim? If not, is there anyone else that would like to address council regarding this matter?
Thank you very much.
Jeff Lloyd, 139 Courthouse Lane, right over here, chair of the planning commission. Wanna bring to light a different thing that happened last year that did come before you, and that was when the taxidermy came in. And at that time, there was no ability to have a taxidermy come into the town. So we had to edit the text, add that to the building. And all it does is it just puts that into the town code for when they come, before you guys, to just apply for that. And you can still tell it's them, but until you add certain language into the town code, they can't even apply. So when he came in wanting to do the taxidermy, he first had to come, make an application just like this, to add it to the town code, to make that an option. So first we ran through that, did that pass this, it was now part of town code, then he needed to come in and say, "Hey, I have a business that would like to take advantage of that," and that's it. And then we had taxidermy that passed. This is to open doors for yet another type, or actually certain types of businesses, which again, yes, if you pass this, whenever those individual businesses come in, will take that application, you can put a bunch of conditions on it, or you can deny it out. That's it, that's all I, thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to address council regarding this public hearing? Last call? Public hearing's closed. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance O-20, 20-03? Yes. Is there a second? We have a second by Valerie. Any further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote, please? Otis? Tabby? Tammy? Jean? Valerie? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Mr. Sam Pross, the representative from the community Heart and Soul.
After, remind me after this, we'll end this closed session. Forgot to do that.
Good evening, folks.
And I have a note.
I left the last meeting feeling that I was terribly amiss in providing council with updates and enough information and so on and so forth in regards to what Community Heart and Soul is, is trying to accomplish. My game plan is to provide you with a monthly update as we work through some of the projects that I'm going to be discussing this evening. I think it's vital that Community Heart and Soul forms some sort of partnership with town council. And I fear that if we don't, then ultimately we will not be as successful as we ought to be. Where we are now, with the money that we received from town council, we are in the process of ordering the banner, postcards, rack cards, for the Community Heart and Soul reveal. Now the reveal, if we'd had the harvest festival, or the wine festival, where there was a large gathering, the reveal would be when we tell people, "Hey, this is Community Heart and Soul, this is what we are about, this is some projects that we're gonna be involved in, our goals and so on." And through that, we had hoped to enlist some more interest in Community Heart and Soul. You know what happened. So now, it appears that our reveal will be held during one of the Music on the Green events. That's the only thing we have left actually, where we can get in touch with the public. It won't be the mass of people that we were hoping for, but it might be enough people that we can get the word out, and maybe we can do more than one of the Music on the Green events, and try to make up for that. Rebecca Sullivan and Jo Elsa are in the process of ordering the banner and the cards, get ready for the reveal, okay? We received a $500 grant from the Fredericksburg Area Association of Realtors, our grant, to begin our community garden, and that takes us into what I call where we are going. The core group, this is the eight or nine people who are the engine that's driving the Community Heart and Soul. And the other folks that will be involved, they expressed an interest in doing specific things, which I will be discussing here shortly. But the core group meets on a monthly basis, and we are the ones that are coming up with these ideas for projects and so on. We've been brainstorming ideas to beautify and enhance the town of Boland Green. We've identified two projects that we still, we need to discuss with council, and then there is another project that council really does need to be involved in. The community garden, this is what we came up with. The plan entails constructing raised beds, you know what I'm talking about there? Not plowing up or disking up or rotating soil. The raised beds are boxes, and you fill them with soil and you plant things in, it's as simple as that. Constructing raised beds, creating walkways, planting some trees and some shrubs. Raised beds would include butterfly gardens, vegetables, herbs, and came up with an idea that we needed to have community involvement, we wanted to get the kids involved. So we thought we would have young kids come in to do the planting of the vegetables and the flowers and so on. And hopefully they would come back and help us maintain it. But we thought we'd get the kids involved, and that was parents, and then under the circumstances, as long as you maintain the social distancing and so on, you know, the kids could come in and they could keep their distance, they could be involved in something like this, and probably, with young kids, they'll keep coming back to see how stuff is, you know, how it's grown and so on and so forth. An eight-foot bean teepee, if you've ever been to Jamestown or Colonial Williamsburg, in colonial days, they grew their beans using poles in the, in the form of a teepee. We're gonna include some of those as well. Now, the location, this is where you all come in. We were looking around trying to find a space where we could put the community garden. We identified the empty lot behind the playground and the pavilion. And that was where we thought we would ask council for permission to begin the construction of this community garden. We don't need an okay tonight, okay? Because we can't do anything until spring anyhow, we can't plan anything right now. So we would like council to consider it. I'll be back next month. If you've reached a decision, fine, if you need more time to think about it, that's fine too. I'm gonna apologize for this. Rebecca Sullivan put this diagram together. I printed it out and then ran out of ink, so I only have one. But I'm, I'm gonna print some more once Amazon gets me some more ink. The brown part there, Jason, is the playground, in the lower right-hand corner.
I can make some copies and.
I would li, I would love for everybody on council to have a copy.
And also email it to us, then we won't have to print it.
Okay, that'd be great. I still need the ink though, that's. The second project. Lisa Gaddy came up with the idea of constructing benches to be placed around town. Each bench, her concept was, if you put a bench on Milford Street, then on the bench you would paint Milford Street. If you put the bench on South Main, you would paint on it South Main. A place, and I think, I think people would do this, you know, the ice cream place, I know they have picnic tables out there. When we get people walking through town again, I think the benches would be a place where people would sit and they would talk, it's got that small-town flavor, where you can converse, you can meet with people and so on and so forth. We have not identified how many benches, and we have not identified exactly where they would be located. I think council needs to think about where they would permit us to put the benches, because obviously someone would be on the sidewalk, I guess. So, but this was a new idea, we haven't progressed very far with this. I have a template for the benches. Initially, when we first discussed this, I thought we would go over to the building trades classes over at the high school, who have already made benches for, I don't know, five, six years. The virus struck that too, because now they're not gonna be in, in session. So if they get in session during the second nine weeks and council approves it, then as long as we buy the materials, I know the kids in the building trades would make the benches. I know they would. Thank you, Travis. Thank you. So like I said, when the second nine weeks, when a school board meets, and they assess their options for that, whether they're gonna do in-house, or if they're gonna continue with virtual, then we can determine whether they would go. Otherwise, you know, we'll get volunteers to build that. We are also in the very, very initial phase of securing some, our grant money to buy the materials to build the benches. Jo Elsa's also taking care of that. She and, what's Kim's last name? Yes. We are gonna have a phone conference sometime in the very near future, discuss getting some money for acquiring materials for the benches. Council will approve that, and tell us how many we can make, tell us where we can put them, and we can go from there. The third project, and hopefully we'll be able to get some farm money for that as well. We have a new business owner in town who is very excited about having a mural painted on his building. His name is Scott Sigmund, his wife taught at the high school with me, I don't know if she's still over there or not. But he's in the market sale building, and he is very excited about having a mural painted. And I'm just sharing that with you, because I don't believe that council really has anything, any vested interest in that other than to beautify the town. August 12th, August 26th, Angla Bay will be conducting Bay's new training. This is the training that relates to what, to the story gathering, part of Community Heart and Soul. And once we go through that training, when I come back next month, I'll give you an update on what was involved in the training and so on. Just for your interest. Any questions, folks?
I just have a couple. On this area, how big is the 2020 area?
Well, let me share with you what Rebecca said. She said, "This might be a bit ambitious, but I go big or I go home." So, can this be pared down? Absolutely. And it might be. So this is the playground.
Big kid playground. That's the big side of the playground, is what you're pointing at. Because you can see the pavilion down here in the bottom, the pavilion's right here.
Okay.
So this would be where the swing sets are?
Yes, where the swing sets, yes.
Yeah, and then the little kids' playground's over here.
So you can have some kind of fence area to be closed to?
Well, I, I, at this juncture, I'd have to say no, we have not anticipated building a fence.
This, this side right here is fenced in by the stormwater retention pond, and then over here is the fence for the, for the water tank.
Yeah.
So basically it's the backside.
And I think that's why here at the top, because there's a fence here and a fence here, I think Rebecca put the trees here.
Yeah.
They could be. We haven't really selected any specific plants, other than, you know, the butterfly garden, there, you know, there's, there's specific plants that work well for that. And of course, the bean teepees would have green beans. But as far as specific plants, you know, the flower beds would have this, we haven't done that yet. Let's see, what was it, oh, herb garden, you know, and a lot of the herbs are actually conducive for a butterfly garden as well, so. So we, we haven't progressed that far yet as to say, okay, we're gonna put this in here, we're gonna put this in here. Once we get, and if we get permission to do this, to locate it over there by the playground, you know, we have some, some time, because we can't really do anything but build the raised beds. That's the only thing we can do right now, because we can't plan anything. To what? Oh. Oh, she wants to make a, I'm not sure what we're gonna put in there yet, but she wants pathways around all of this, and I don't know what material we're gonna use yet.
Well, it might be something we can work with beat out of somebody that did the walking trail, you know, the trail the county did?
Oh, yeah.
Like the crush and run?
Yeah. Yeah, that would be great.
But I think Tammy was gonna have something before I. With the what? What would you do with the product?
Yeah, what did we say we were gonna do with that? That's right, donate to the homeless shelter. Churches that have, you know, people that are in need and so on. Yeah, we, we, you know, when we talked about this, everybody got real excited about it, the core group. Understandable. And there were a lot of ideas floating out there, and everybody's, yeah, that was one thing we had talked about. And that, and the bean teepee was a great idea, I forget who came up with that one. But they wanted to throw a little colonial flavor into it, and, you know, she has one down there, but we could have three or four, make sure there's enough beans for everybody.
Your banner.
Are you gonna put it in a spot? We hadn't planned on that, no. Yeah. But, you know, when we talked about the banner months ago, we thought we were gonna have the banner at the harvest festival, at the wine festival, Mayberry Days, you know, we thought we were gonna have this banner being used a lot of different events, because some of those events were gonna involve the story gathering, because we'd have a crowd of people, we'd have a lot of people from Boland Green and the surrounding area where we could get the stories. Well, we had to adjust that, so. Oh, no, no, I, I see what you mean, I see what you mean. Essentially, it would be, like what a lot of folks do at the harvest festival, I, I have a folding table, we would hang it from the folding table, and we were gonna have folks, you know, sit at the folding table and gather stories that way. It would look very much like the harvest festival. and gather stories, uh, that way, it would look very much like the Harvest Festival. You can plant trees in the fall. Yeah, you can plant those in the fall.
Because they don't want to be without watering so bad.
Correct.
Uh, whereas in spring, you've got to keep up the watering, so...
Yeah, the raised... Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, fall planting of trees is fine, there's nothing wrong with that, raised beds, of course, you can't do anything with that. Although it is best to have the soil in there to winter over. So we could do that, we just couldn't plant anything.
Alrighty.
Questions about the benches?
No, I think it's a great idea.
I, I can't take credit for any of these, actually, uh, but, uh, yeah, I thought it was a great idea myself.
Yep.
Okay, uh, council, thank you, and I will see you again next month.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next item on the agenda is public comments, do we have a list? Okay.
Leader, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I trust each of you are doing well. Uh, I come to you tonight on a couple of different fronts. Uh, first thing is, uh, I'm sure I have reviewed the, uh, YouTube video of the special meeting date, uh, June thirtieth, where everyone accepted my retirement, I appreciate that. Um, but I come to you, uh, tonight, in lieu of, uh, subsection eighteen point two dash three eight point zero one six, uh, which is retired law enforcement officers carrying a concealed handgun, and basically the requirements of this, following these ten years of service, any such, uh, within such law enforcement agency commission, or any combination thereof, uh, the chief, uh, the federal mandate, uh, from two thousand and four dictates that a, uh, photogenic retirement ID shall be issued. Uh, I've inquired about this ID several times, and I've yet to get a solidified ID.
We, we have it, we just, I forgot to call you to tell you that we have it, but I just wanted to verify with Andrea. Yeah, hold on, let me just, I just texted the town attorney, because I had forgotten about it.
So, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, David, it's good to see you, it was my understanding that you retired under the federal system?
No, I retired in the state, I was in the state agency.
From the state agency.
Okay, so wouldn't that be the appropriate entity?
Excuse me?
Wouldn't it be appropriate to get the badge from the entity that you retired from?
That would be the Bowling Green Police Department.
Well, no, you just told me it was a state entity.
The code says, uh, state police, division of Capitol Police, any local law enforcement officer, auxiliary police officer, animal control officer, retired from a police department or sheriff's office within the Commonwealth, uh, is, 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 uh, do this retirement ID. Uh, and, uh, it also says the chief law enforcement officer should not, without files, withhold such written proof that retired law enforcement officer otherwise meets the requirements of this section, which is the requirements qualification for services. And as it comes upon the, the, uh, current chief, to my information, the Virginia Criminal Information Network is a part of state police, on a yearly basis, to make sure I meet those training requirements from here on out.
Well, I, yeah, I would like an opportunity to research this, David, and so I'll, I will prepare, you know, a written memorandum for council, so that we can give you a definite answer.
Well, again, uh, I understand what you're saying, Andrea, but this doesn't come from council, it, it comes from the police department. But I understand what you're saying. This is not a council decision, I'm just bringing it to light, everybody's in the same thing.
We have, I, I had them make the ID based off of this code with Andrea researching it to find out for sure, because, I mean, I, I'm not the legal expert. I know what David sent me, I forwarded it to the attorney, I said, "In the meantime, let's get the ID made, so if, if everything's right, we got it ready." So that's, that's where we stand on that, um...
And I don't come here tonight, uh, again, I'm not trying to rock the boat, but I do have experience in this area, I have done this for other retired officers. So we don't need to come back to council to redo this, it's just, once you get it cleared, Andrea, you can clear the town manager to issue the badge, is that correct?
Yes.
So, what David has told me, though, is that he's issued these badges to former Chief Hoskins and...
Uh, there was an auxiliary officer that, uh, he was here for several years after he had handled the sheriff's office, I've been inquiring about one, he was provided an ID also.
So they were provided IDs without knowledge of council, just based off of this code by the police department?
Only reason I'm here tonight is because I, I'm just looking for an answer.
Well, I'll, I'll be sure to get you an answer, and I will also be responding to your Freedom of Information Act request.
Okay, thank you.
What, what kind of timeframe would you have that for?
Timeframe on what?
On the ID.
On the ID. What kind of timeframe are you looking at? I don't want to leave him hanging.
I, I would say within the next two weeks.
Uh, thank you, Andrea. The second thing I wanted to bring to council's attention tonight, uh, this, this has a little more of a monetary value, uh, under state code section fifty-nine point one dash one forty-eight point three, is the purchase of handguns or other weapons by certain retired officers, and that would include me. And again, that says any local police department may allow any full-time small law enforcement officer to purchase their service weapon for one dollar, that's state code. Subsection E is any officer who has the town's retirement as a full-time small law enforcement officer with a state agency's business, subsection A, uh, who retired with ten years state service or local subdivision, even if a portion of his service was with another state agency, may purchase his service handgun issued to him by the agency for, uh, when he retires for the price of one dollar. So I bring that to your attention tonight also. I would be requesting that service weapon under that code section.
So if I heard correctly, you said that they may be able to purchase it, so that is a decision of council.
It is a decision.
Okay, so I just want to make sure everybody's clear that I'm not being...
I'll add that to the list.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other code sections?
Nope, that's it.
Okay.
This is the first we've heard of the gunfire arm, request was tonight.
Um, in closing, uh, sorry to bore you with the details tonight, I just wanted to tell everybody, uh, I didn't get a chance to tell you, thank you for the opportunity to serve the town of Bowling Green. I, I hope I left the department in better shape than it is in the start of this. I do believe that you have a functional police department now, uh, with programs and software and things that are superior to the future. And, um, your current police chief will obviously need your support, uh, as he, as he comes, uh, comes into his own, uh, administering his, uh, his, his current position. So, again, thank you, I wish town of Bowling Green all the best, and, uh, you guys have a good night.
We'll, we'll be in touch, David, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have anybody, just that one public comment? Okay, we'll double check on the public comments? Okay, next item is...
This is our microphone for everybody in there and everything?
And those little ones.
And the, those are not getting on the Zoom. Is the speakerphone going on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, well, they're having a hard time hearing a lot of you.
Okay, well, I'll project very loudly. Um, next item on the agenda is our police, uh, report. Oh, yeah, before we move forward, we need to add a, uh, agenda item, uh, we want to add a closed session at the end. Andrea has that code section regarding that?
I do. I'll, I'll have it when, you know, when we go into closed meeting, I'll read the motion.
Okay, um, thank you, good. I still had a note written here, I still forgot it. Uh, police chief report, um, Justin had a short tenure from the last one, so he only had ten days of it. First off, I'd like to welcome Justin as the police chief of the town. Um, you know, we, we support you and look forward to many years. Um, any questions on the police chief's report? I know he's catching up on a lot of the training on the software and makes, finding everything in the office, so... Uh, and I do know that you're going to see the police car out and about like we used to for speeding enforcement, um, so don't be alarmed if you see it out there on the street, it's, it's working. I, I sit out there every morning for coffee, and I've noticed the speed the last couple of days has been slower. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I just wanted to thank everybody for, you know, having me, and, um, I just wanted to let everybody know, I have had meetings this week with Virginia State Police and the Carolina County Sheriff's Office. Um, we're all on one page, we're all here to do a job, and the town of Bowling Green has one hundred percent support from both agencies. So, um, we're all on track, and everything's looking good. I just wanted to let y'all know.
Something that, that I know, we're a small department, but I'm, you know, I want to replicate, reciprocate that both to them too, if there's ways that we can help their agencies, you know, because I know we call on them a lot also, so...
I just wanted to let y'all know, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, uh, next item is the public works report, um, Billy is not here with us this evening.
I did have a couple of questions.
Yes, they pay for everything, and they've also paid for whatever damage is done to a water basin.
Okay, perfect, good. And then I noticed on, uh, the report that there were about fifteen, seventeen open, uh, work orders.
Um, those are actually hydrant maintenance, and I believe what happened was, um, the, the maintenance worker that's out in the field is actually doing it, he's checking it off on paper, because he doesn't have a smartphone or a tablet, he chooses, he prefers not to have it. So, in return, it should be entered when he gets back to the office, and it's not, it wasn't happening. But it's, uh, routine maintenance on this.
Uh, something I, I would just like to bring up, and, you know, I notice we get in these routines of calling the same contractors over and over for our water leaks, and I feel that if, we either need to go two routes, we either need to make a list and rotate it like we kind of do the tow operators for the state police, to make it more fair to our local, because there's going to be a day that one, one vendor that we use all the time is not available, and somebody's going to turn us down because we, we use them when we want to, or we send it out for bid, and spec out basic parts and basic repairs, and we bid it out and give everybody a fairer chance to, to submit a bid on it, and then we do only use one contractor. But the way of going and just, if you can't tell me one reason why we called David Brooks on two, two calls within five days without maybe checking with other vendors, you know, if we've had issues with other vendors, then sure, that, that's one thing, but I, I, it was brought to my attention by another local company that we've used in the past, and they're like, you know, we, we're, we're available, but we never get called anymore, so... We could either make a list or come up with some type of bid specification, so we could put it out for bid, and, no, we were not playing favorites.
Okay.
Um, any other questions on this public works report? Next item is, uh, economic development and coordinator, Jo Elsa's here with a report, are there any questions on her report, or before she gets started, or?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for having me, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Um, I think my report is pretty thorough. Um, the main things that I'm focused on right now are grant research, um, specifically the CARES Act funding, which you all are familiar with, we had the, the work session on, uh, last night, I will, or last week, um, I will update you all that I had a virtual meeting with the county, with, uh, the county administrator and assistant administrator, as well as head Lambert, and, um, there seems to be some concern about the voucher program. Specifically, there was concern about money going directly to individuals that would go back to, uh, into the businesses. Melissa and I met afterwards and didn't really understand, uh, why there was concern, because ultimately, the money is going into businesses, and this seems to be a great solution that not only helps our small business community, but also helps, um, our residents here, so, um, I heard their concerns, I am actively addressing them, and I am going to be in touch with the Department of Treasury to get some good clarification, um, directly from the source on what we can and cannot spend that money on. Um, right now, we have categorized that voucher program, it's about eighty-four thousand dollars, under small business grant and program. So, um, if the voucher program does not work out, we'll figure something else out. Melissa and I have already met, we've talked about alternate ideas, we brainstormed, um, so I, I do think that we're going to be able to meet the objectives that we're setting out to meet. It may not look exactly the way that we presented it, but I'm currently in the process of doing the research and getting the answers that we need, so that we can move forward, knowing that we're helping our business community and our residents here, um, so, yes, sir.
I have a question for you, I understood that we met, so voucher pro, programs themselves levels from twenty to forty thousand, you just said it's eighty-four thousand?
Just in the small business, uh, grant program, is that number accurate, how much money? Yes, that's right. So, um, so that would encompass some small business grants, um, things that are open to possible E D A programs. Uh, again, I'll revisit kind of what we said in, in, in the work session, and that is, we want to keep this as high level as possible right now, so that we have some flexibility, and so that, um, the county agencies, state agencies are holding us to real specifics, um, right now, but we, it will get more specific as we get further on into the process.
So there's, there's considerations for the COVID remediation program that was presented?
Um, that would be part of that.
So out of the eighty-four thousand, forty thousand was kind of earmarked for the voucher, the other forty-four thousand would be for that type of stuff?
Things like that, yes. Absolutely, but again, you know, we don't really know, is that, you know, we, we had our eyes set on this voucher program, we ran into some questions and some concerns from the county, so we're working through that. And, um, I feel confident that I'll be able to give you all a thorough and informed update on that within the next few weeks. Yes, ma'am, I did, I asked that question, and was told that the town would have to provide a grant to residents that would encompass all utilities, that it could not just be water and sewer. Again, these are answers that we've received from, uh, county administration, and so we're just doing our due diligence and double-checking with, uh, Department of Treasury to make sure that the information that we're getting is, um, accurate. But yes, it is, it is, uh, certainly a perfect question that we have.
So is the county challenged if they don't think we can do this, or they don't want to do this?
Well, that's a, um, a subjective, um, probably a subjective answer, that, uh, that probably, uh, I probably shouldn't answer... I probably shouldn't answer or couldn't answer up here tonight. Um, that said.
Sounds like to me they're interpreting the rules themselves where we really need to go the next level and get a full ruling, not just interpret it on a level that's not enforcing the program.
There's several counties already in the state that I've read up on that already for doing that program. There's no doubt.
Yes.
Through the CARE Fund?
Correct. So, if, um, if you just read, going through the state ever did that or even Andrea sent us information that the entire information of what you can do instead of just going to the register? Because again, they may give you information that the county wants to do. Just, just around about, do you want to know?
No, I think you're talking about the federal level of Department of Treasury.
I'm, I'm talking about at the, at the very top.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
And so, um, we wanna make sure that we're clear on this and, you know, we want, we know that certain things, just like our municipal code or different municipal codes can be open to interpretation and they can be interpreted in many different ways. And so, that's why we really wanna do our due diligence and make sure that we're getting them right and sure and that the money is, is able to be spent the way that we think is gonna be most helpful to our small businesses and our residents here in Bowling Green. Um, you know, the, the, the big concerns seem to be, um, proof of hardship. Um, proof that people, uh, have been negatively impacted from a financial standpoint or monetary standpoint from COVID specifically. So, again, these are just kind of the, the little details that we need to iron out. We need to find out from the top so that we are, um, on the up and up and above board on how we're spending this money.
I think, I think I remember saying that at my last meeting, that we need to find that's detailed out. So, why are we two weeks behind on some of the details?
Why are we two weeks behind on?
Yeah, that's what we had a meeting last time and I, I said then, I said, this is a state sponsored program. So, our small town guidelines are out the window and everything is gonna be on the open end. They're not gonna, one of us sit there and say, like, this, uh, they was just saying, hey, you got water? Well, we can't just do water because of all these utilities. So, everything is gonna have to be for the whole general. It can't be, you know, pick and choose.
Yeah, and I think Joels is doing that. She is. She, she, we, we have to work, we have to work with the CARES Act, it's going to the county. And that's right. So, we have to work through our chain of command. We work to the county level. If the county doesn't give us the interpretation we feel that is proper, she is now moving it to the Department of Treasury level. Uh, I don't know if you realize this in the, in government, nothing happens in a two-week period in local gov- or federal government. So, don't, don't just as, don't, but don't phrase that as, why are we taking two weeks to do this? She's telling you that we, we have been working on this since last week.
I rephrase. I said two weeks ago that this was probably gonna happen, but we just need to be on the open end with it. Uh, the county doesn't quite know it. So, we had to find out ourselves to make sure we're on the right, or the county's not giving us all the information as well. But we can do four.
Yeah, but the county ultimately is the first organization with the funds. The funds come down to the county and if, if they tell us that we're not doing things right, they, they're not gonna give us the money. I mean, they're the holder of the money. They're the first group. This money technically is not ours. It's, it's earmarked for ours.
It's for us. It is for us, the county has to give it to us by certain guidelines. What's the, you know, what is it done on is the?
Cooperation on grants. It's based on my belief, yes.
Yeah, but they're the first administrator of this grant. And then from there, we move up to the federal level and that's, you know, it's been one week. You know, we met last, y'all met last week. Yeah.
They're, they're, you know.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're, we're working, um, I mean, I, I can say confidently that amongst council, with the work session, with our staff internally, we're actively working to, to get this program done expeditiously as it was given to us very expeditiously as well. So, we're, you know, we're, we were given a short amount of time. We're, we're, we're actively looking at this daily, um, and engaging with different folks, um, to, to get to the bottom of things so that we can get this money and that we can justify that it's going to the right places, um, per, per the county guidelines and the federal guidelines. Um, I'm also looking at, in terms of other grants, looking at a, a new grant that was just announced by Governor Northam, uh, called Rebuild VA, uh, Rebuild Virginia. This is a, a grant that is, encompasses about seventy million total. Um, it's designed to help approximately seven thousand small businesses and nonprofits across the Commonwealth. Um, and that application has not even been released yet. It will be released on August tenth. Um, but it is, uh, it allows for small businesses and nonprofits that have been disrupted by COVID-nineteen to receive about three times the average of their monthly expenses up to ten thousand dollars. So, I'm actively looking into that as well. Again, this is, um, this information just came out as of last week. Application isn't even out yet. So, just so rest assured that we're in front of this stuff and, um, and, and ahead of it and we're actively looking to, to get this fund as well. Um, Music on the Green is tomorrow, it's kicking off tomorrow. I'm keeping an eye on the weather as I always do, hour by hour. Uh, because of COVID-nineteen, we do not have the alternate state of using town halls. We, we don't know how many people to expect. It's a free event, it's not tickets. So, if it does rain, the event will, will simply cancel and we'll be making all those announcements appropriately on, uh, social media, website. And I haven't spoken to Melissa about this, but potentially, um, the alert system. Um.
Joels, what's the T-shirt?
Um, so, that, the T-shirt was presented to me by, um, John Hahn, who is doing some graphic work for the Bowling Green Virginia Community Alliance, which, uh, Mark is the president of. And, um, I asked you to see a proof of the T-shirt prior to, uh, to it going to print. And, um, and to, you'll see that in your packet.
She has it made up here, hasn't it?
Yes.
Really? Wow. Because the town of Bowling Green is in the sponsor, we're hosting it. It's a convention in this event.
That's what it is. They're, they're, they're leaving it up on the top. On the top of the shirt, there is the town of Bowling Green. The music of Bowling Green on the back.
On the back?
Yeah.
Well, we're the host. It should be on the top. Well, we're a host, we are the town of Bowling Green, it's our event. So, we should be on the top of the shirt. In actuality, we should sell the shirt and people like BGVA, Miss Alshay's sponsor shirt. We could do all of that. All right? I'm just saying I don't believe the town should be on the top of the shirt.
Well, why not? It's down the bowling green.
We're a host, we need that, that's all I'm saying.
And, and you're on the top.
I did, um. I did speak with, um, Councilmember Gaines about volunteer opportunities, uh, for BGVA, Community Alliance, to align themselves with the event in support of the event and have not received feedback, so. Uh, but I, I did, yeah, I did wanna include that in your packet so that, so that you're aware. Um, and just finally, uh. Boy, you're not incorrect. The town of Bowling Green sponsors Music on the Green, Public Works, uh, has it set up, to take down. We book the town, we do the marketing. Um, and Union Bank, uh, Atlantic Union Bank actually, uh, donated, uh, monetary, uh, funds.
So, here and all, what is the Main Street Group doing besides making T-shirts? I mean, are you, i- is the Main Street Group volunteering to help work the event? And what's, I mean, what's the, what's? No, but I mean, like, I'm, I'm just trying to, uh, word this the right way. Um, so, Bowling Green Fire Department can walk up the street and make this shirt and sell it and make money off of it, but yet all they gotta do is sit two people at the table to sell shirts. And it looks like, if I was to walk up to this table and buy this shirt, it looks like I'm supporting an organization that's putting this event on. Or if I wear this shirt, yeah, and that's what, uh, I mean, I, I'm just, I think that's what council's concern is. I, I'm not trying to get in the middle of it, but I'm just trying to clarify so we understand. What is the purpose of the shirts? Is it to advertise?
We are not personally. You're selling a shirt? No, I'm just saying for.
Council did not pay for it.
So, you're selling a shirt that has the town of Bowling Green on the back, partly under our logo of the town, and you didn't come to us and ask us if you do?
Okay, I, I was hoping to do that. Why? So, no, you don't, you don't.
It's the town, you're making money off the town.
So, why?
So, why?
You got businesses in town that are very, making money off of Music on the Green, selling more food, selling more thought. You had Hot Dog Wicker out here selling hot dogs.
That's totally.
No, 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 it's just.
No, 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 no.
He doesn't call it town of Bowling Green, Hot Dog.
No, we're not, we're not gonna get in an argument here. But I can tell you this, that if, if, if somebody walked up to the fire department's dinner, that we do that sportsman dinner and said, we're gonna sell T-shirts and we're gonna put Bowling Green Sportsman on the back, sportsman dinner, and they're gonna profit from all the hard work we put into it? Now, if Main Street Group partners with the town of Bowling Green and you supply all the volunteers, then I don't think council or anybody would have any issues. But if, if, if I, if, if I heard correctly, the opportunity was given to the Main Street Group to be volunteers with it and there hasn't been a response. Yeah.
We're a nonprofit organization to help support this town, businesses and communities.
So, I'm gonna play the devil's advocate here because I've heard for many months, and I, I, I promised myself I wasn't gonna interject like this, but I've heard for many, many months, what has the EDA done for the town of Bowling Green? What has the Bowling Green Main Street Group done for the town of Bowling Green?
We just started up and we're starting to do a lot. It's got new businesses coming into town. We put some money into the town, we put a lot of effort into the town. Whether you can see it or not, we got a lot of interest coming into this town. And we're not gonna stop. We're not as fly by night.
I just think, I just think going forward, I think in the best interest of any group that's looking to use the town-sponsored event, should approach council before using the, the likeness of this event.
Well, I think that goes for any event.
That's right, say, any event, any event. I mean, unless you are the key sponsors, like, hey, I'm providing all the volunteers for these events, that's how we're gonna authorize wearing these BGVA shirts.
Well, no, but I didn't hear that from Tammy. We're really gonna use the wine festival, we're gonna use the ball festival to do our deal.
He's setting up a booth. He's setting up a booth, he's not selling a T-shirt. He's not, he's not selling a T-shirt that makes it like the community heart and souls put on this event.
What about the donations you asked for, for these events? On your site, you ask to donate. So, the wine festival, I donate fifty dollars to BGVA to donate for the wine festival. A town sanctioned event will happen next year or was going to happen this year.
You got a wrong donation to a home private, non-profit organization.
If I go to your site now, there's a link that says I can donate to these events. I can donate to whatever.
I'm not worried about that. I know you can donate to, to the foundation.
And then you need to check what's on it because it says donate to these events.
But I would check them after that's the people that.
It says, why would I donate to and go ahead and pay a ticket to the town? Why try and act like I don't?
We do, we do a check on it and find out why it's that late. We have a donate button on there, we donate solely to the nonprofit.
For events in town, that's what it says.
Our only events that we put on.
Right, so, but your website says Music on the Green Wine Festival, it's a town sanctioned event. You're a nonprofit, it's a town sanctioned event. That's all I'm saying.
I said, we're going to have a check on that.
Okay.
I think if you, I, I just wanna say that I, I support synergy between all volunteer groups in town and the town. And I see myself as a liaison and a conduit. Um, that said, Folk Festival is a huge concert event in Richmond. Um, people can't come, companies, nonprofits can't come to the Folk Festival with the lineup on a T-shirt and sell that shirt for profit because it's illegal. Um, the Folk Festival would have a hard time, like, would not be okay with that. So, I think I want, what I would like to, um, just really emphasize here is that I'm all about synergy between these groups. I'd love for us to be able to work together and, and that, that option is certainly there. Um, at this point, it is a, a challenge. I'll see any further questions that you all may have on our report.
Thank you, Joels.
Thank you all for your time.
Very much, Joels.
I know you had a busy couple of weeks. Thank you for all your hours, after-hours, long days. Thank you. Uh, next item is the Town Clerk's, uh, Report. Are there any questions for the Town Attorney? I mean, Town Treasurer? You got a motion. Hearing none, we'll move on to the Town Manager's Report. Um, basically, I'll read the little bit that's here. It's Town Council July's regular meeting held on June twenty-fifth, Town Council CARES Act work session on the twenty-eighth. He attended the Streets and Sidewalks Committee and the Town of Bowling Green's Water System Rehabilitation Phase One Bid Documents and Specifications are currently being reviewed by USDA and will go to bid presently. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. I'd like to just point out that usually that's bills and minutes. Item eleven is applicant, reads here as application for special use. That is just so that we can advertise for the public hearing is what that item is in the consent agenda. So, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? A motion by Glenn, is there a second? Second by Otis and any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Item twelve on the agenda, I'll read this background and then I'm gonna probably, if there's any questions, defer to Melissa. Application has been made with, uh, WH Holdens LLC.
Does?
No. That's, I'm sorry, I didn't flip far enough. Bond resolution. Um, there's a decision to be made by motion. The town has secured a letter of conditions for permanent funding for improvements to the town's water system from the USDA, Rural Development, in the form of a loan not to exceed five point six nine three million and grants not to exceed one point six zero two million for a long-term financing package of seven point two nine five million. The loan from RD will be evidenced by the town's revenue bond, which will be payable solely from revenues of the town's water system. RD requires the town to obtain interim financing for the project, for project costs if it can obtain the financing on reasonable rates and terms. The interim loan would be paid off by the RD Permanent Long-Term Financing on or about June fifteenth, twenty twenty?
That should be twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one?
Um, this will, this point that I asked you, but I had already printed everything.
When the project has been completed. The bond hearing on the issuance was held during council's June fourth meeting. Action was not taken on the resolution at the time because the town had not received final credit approval from the bank. We did receive that final credit approval on July seventeen. Is there a motion to adopt the bond resolution? There's a motion to accept the bond resolution. Is there a second? Second by Deborah. Any further questions? We'll do a roll call vote. Glenn? Otis? Deborah? Tammy? Jean? Valerie? Mark? Motion passes. Moving on to the CARES Fund, uh, next item is the CARES Act Funding Update. Uh, we've discussed this a little bit, but the allocated amount for the town of Bowling Green was one hundred and four thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. Uh, there was, the EDA and council all met, um, and came up with, uh, twenty thousand dollars for. and came up with, uh, twenty thousand dollars for audiovisual equipment required for virtual meetings and obtained, and needed to sustain continuity in government operations with town council boards, commissions, and the public. Ten thousand for PPE. Eighty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars for small business relief programs and grants. And that encompasses the voucher program that we're getting clarification on. And there's a letter that was presented to the, uh, county administrator outlining our spending plan. Uh, we will need a motion or to, uh, to accept this letter. Um, this is from the town manager. The background on it is, "I will be retiring on December first, twenty twenty. Attached for your reference is ICMA's recruitment guidelines for selecting a local government administrator. I've also taken the liberty to reach out to two search firms that have knowledge of Virginia local government and specialize in assisting local governments in their recruitment of their new chief executive officers. One firm will also provide an interim, interim administrator if requested. I will forward this information to the mayor and town council when received." And there's an attachment of several pages regarding recruitment. Um, but I would entertain a motion to accept this letter as, uh, notice that Reese, like the town manager, will be retiring on December first, twenty twenty.
So the motion is to accept the town manager's retirement effective December first, twenty twenty?
That's it. We have a motion by Mark, is there a second? Second by Deborah, any further discussion? Yeah, this is just his letter of, this is, he just gave that for information purposes. Any, uh, all in favor, raise your right hand? Got motion passes. Next item is, uh, is there a motion for closed session?
Is there a motion to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one for the purpose of discussing the performance of the town manager?
We have that motion by Mr. McDermott, is there a second? Second by Ms. Davis, any further discussion? We will, uh, all in favor, raise your right hand? Okay, we'll take a quick break to clear the room, and then we'll do our, uh, member committee report at the end after we come out. We will.
Considered.
I'll make that motion. We have a motion by Mr. Gaines, is there a second? Second by Mr. McDermott, is there any further discussion? We're going to certify?
Yes.
Certified, certified.
Yes, yes, certified. Okay, we're back in open session?
Is, is there, is there a motion to place the town manager on paid administrative leave effective immediately and until December 1st, 2020?
I'll make that motion. And we have a motion by Glenn, is there a second? Second by Otis, is there any further discussion?
I would, I would like to say, I don't have a discussion on it, but I would like to say how, I'd like to thank him for what he has done for this town. Uh, he's done a lot with our computer system, helping us get grants. I know there's some other.
Yeah. No, I, I agree, I would like to, I'll give council a chance and then I'll wrap it up at the end if there's anyone else that would like to say anything? Okay, we'll do that, okay, all in favor, raise your right hand? All opposed? Okay, motion passes?
Is, was that an unanimous vote?
No, um, Ms. Gaines voted no.
Okay, then I'd do a roll call, please?
Roll call vote, Glenn?
Yes.
Yes.
Abstain? She's abstaining.
Okay. Has everybody voted?
No, not yet, Jean?
Yes.
Yes.
Everybody voted, we have one, one abstaining.
Okay, all right.
Do I have a reason for that abstain? There a reason? I don't have any information, none of the preparation.
Okay. Well, then I'll start it, but by saying I truly appreciate the town manager bringing us to the point that we are, he's, he, um, he's brought our water treatment plan up, he funded, he found the grants to get us new police vehicles, town vehicles, um, we've gotten some good grants through USDA to redo almost our entire sewer system. Uh, we're working on getting our water system up to standards now, um. He's implemented new technology within the office, our phone systems, uh, our public works software, um, he's kind of cleaned up our accounting books and, and made our budget, um, line items where they need to be and started working on where each water and sewer are funding themselves, um. And I, I always said when we hired the town manager that as the mayor, it would be nice to have somebody that I know I could go to sleep with and know that they're going to run the town's business part of it. And I feel like he did that and I appreciate all the time and effort that he has given us. So I'd like to just say thank you. Anyone else?
I concur with everything you said and in further, he's done enormous work with planning commission. Um, we never moved so fast towards our comprehensive plan and future maps in the last two years. He has done a lot of work on that.
Yeah, and I failed to mention our town code that him and the town attorney are working to get updated and so. I know this is coming at a, a good time for him and his retirement with the grand babies and that's where he is this week, so I wish him well on spending more time with, where, where it counts with the family. So.
Sure, I would also like to make a statement that while the town manager is on paid administrative leave until next time another town manager appointed, I'll move that the town treasurer first, because that's the same authority as the position of town manager. So it takes any and all necessary actions on behalf of the town.
Okay, we have a motion by Glenn to name in short words Melissa the interim town manager. Is there a second? Second by Jean. Oh, uh, any further discussion? Once we vote on it, then we can go to her. Uh, with, with all the favor, raise your right hand? Okay.
I'm sorry. Sure, yeah.
And Melissa, I assume you would accept these expanded duty?
Yeah, I'd be happy to help carry those, we get them from everything.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um. Okay, is, we'll do council slash member comments, Mark? I don't have them. Valerie?
Um, we had a really good meeting way up, or two weeks ago, um, in reference to the future map. We did a lot of designations and girls who were there, so we got a lot of feedback from the DA. Um, so we are really good on that and I think at our next meeting we can set up a lot of other, little mini chat.
Thank you, Jean?
Uh, we have meeting and meeting and we talked about some, we talked about, we want, and we'll tell them, I'll let them, they will.
Okay, team? Devin? Otis? Glenn?
Well, there's a lot of development, uh, discussion, uh, three and one quarter, we talked about, we're setting a meeting for the interesting part, we were asking, also, that Joe Elsott set a meeting with us for the folks there interested in developing in the town, now, if you don't develop.
Yeah, I was going to ask Valerie about that, I heard at the planning commission that there's a developer that approached the town about the property on.
Next December?
Yep.
Yes, uh, he's actually going to be out on next, uh, two weeks, in two weeks, when we get him and go over people.
Are there any detail, I know there's, it's been on the street and a lot of chatter about the, the town home situation, is it looking at any type of income levels or is it just, just developing it into 84 townhomes?
There is, the developer is supposed to be, uh, rental townhouse, kind of, like, townhouse, so it'll be a mixed, uh, income, LMI.
Okay.
Modern income, probably, I don't know that for sure.
Okay.
Plus the EDA has asked, we need to understand what they're looking at, what the problem might be.
Okay, good.
The other thing that I'd like to say to the mayor, I think it's important imperative, at this point in time, if you take control, we're going to make sure that all things that the manager has, and what the person does, make sure that those things are coordinated, access to the computers.
We will. Yeah. We'll, we'll work with the town attorney and the town, the interim manager to make sure that, and we'll work with our police chief if there's anything that we need to, to secure. And Andrea, will you prepare a letter?
I'm doing that right now.
Okay, thank you. Um. I don't, I don't have anything else, I mean, I'd just like to thank all the staff for all their hard work and all of council's hard work and hard decisions and. I just ask that we continue to try to work together, I know the last few meetings has been some tension in the room and I don't feel like that's a reflection of the town of Bowling Green and I want us, I want council to remember that you're supposed to be representing the town and make sure that we're all representing the town, including myself in a way that's proper, in the way that we should as a public group, so. It's okay to disagree, but we need to do that in an adult and proper manner and I know I've been in a bad spot and put myself in a bad spot and not acted professional at times, so. I'm not pointing fingers at anybody because I'd be pointing them right back at myself, so, um, again, we have to learn that just because we don't agree on things, it doesn't mean that we're not here to work for the best interest of this town. So, next time somebody says something that we don't agree with, just think, is that your personal opinion or are they saying this for the best interest of the town and remember that we're here to serve as the pub, serve the public, so. With that being said, is there a motion for adjournment? We have a motion for adjournment, second by Jean, and.